I have six thirty right now. Okay. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call to order our Scottsburg City Council meeting on this February the fourteenth, year two thousand twenty-two of our Lord. First thing we do is begin by prayer and pledge beliefs. So if you're able to stand and want to stand, begin with prayer. Father, we bow our heads and hearts before you to thank you for your love and your goodness and your provision, Father. And thank you for life itself, Father. This pilgrimage is amazing. And Father, we just pray for your wisdom. We pray for understanding of all these things, Father. Thank you that we can come together as elected officials to represent the people of Scottsburg, Indiana. Thank you for this opportunity, Father. And again, we pray for wisdom. We pray for your blessing upon our city and upon these men and women who serve this city and serve you. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next thing on our agenda is a roll call by our clerk treasurer, Jan Hart.
Mayor Amy?
Here.
Chris Albertson.
Bill Holblin?
Here.
Rick Mans?
Here.
Christian Evans?
Here.
Chuck Rose?
Here.
Okay, so thank you, clerk treasurer, Jan Hart. Next is we have the approval of minutes of January twenty-fourth. Do we have a motion if we can for approval of minutes unless you see chairs?
I'll make a motion.
Christian, thanks for the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chapter those seconds. Questions, comments? If you have, would you say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign? Unanimous? Thank you. The next thing we have is a public comment period. The city council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state your name for the record. Each person will have five to voice their opinion. Your mark should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Do we have any? Good morning, good evening. How are you?
Good.
What's in here?
Yeah, you're good. You're good.
Everybody good?
Good.
Good.
Are there anyone who would like to go forward this evening? Bring none. We'll close that and now go to new business. The next thing we have is Resolution twenty-two dash R dash two, a preliminary declaratory resolution designating an economic revitalization area and approving a tax abatement for the entities. Josh, can I talk about that?
I think we have John here. He had filed an SB one with us about a month ago, and I don't think he was able to make it through the last of June, so he got taken for this meeting. So I will look. John addresses.
Go ahead, buddy.
So, we purchased the property down at nine fifty South Gardner. That's kind of the primary address down there. It's on the corner of Casey's. We're planning on doing some fairly massive renovations down there. If anybody's been down to that property in the last, you know, two to three years, you know it's extremely derelict. Bag roofs, water leaking in all the buildings. We're going to turn all that around and turn into prosperous portion of our city again. I don't know if you have any direct questions?
Well, I think, John, last time on your statement, benefits, if you listed an additional twelve employees and salaries of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yes, and that's, I guess there was some question about that, whether that was, is that accurate or whether that was like one of the previous forms that just got, you know, got filled in?
That's our estimate. So, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to be renovations, and that's, you know, my best guess at this point in time, that's what my contractors should do. Four hundred and fifty is where we're at. I know right now, I am seventy thousand dollars into it just this month. That gives you the idea of how far we're into this. So, the twelve jobs is assuming that we ran out all the commercial spaces and that's providing jobs in each one of those spaces. There are seven commercial spaces there. We have one of them rented out that has three employees already, and they're moving in this week. So I'd like to say, towards that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and those twelve employees, we have good progress already in just one month.
Thank you. We just had a question. I remember that, that particular items. So, the employees are people that you're renting to? Not your employees, but the people that you're renting?
Yeah, it's not mine. It's, we rent primarily to small business, mine hub type operations and give them a place to get off and around.
I thought, I thought I understood that correctly, but didn't know for sure last time.
Yeah, again, we will be putting a laundromat in there, but I don't think I could list my children in that age for real, so some employees yet.
Any other questions, guys? What is the next thing then you need to do, Josh?
Tell the council. Any other question?
The next motion, approve the resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Chapter those makes the motion to approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash R dash two. Rick Mans, second. Other questions, comments, concerns? Bring none? Would you say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign? Okay, unanimous. There you go.
So the next step now is we have to have a public hearing. We kind of talked about this before the meeting with the approach of times down. We're looking for, we have to find alternative methods to advertise and properly notice the public hearing. So I would anticipate that not being the next meeting, but the first meeting in March. So, all communicate with Jill and Melissa for sure. That's the expectation at this point.
Okay, going on to, I remember, the next item is approval of the proposal to update the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. I assume you guys have seen all of this? And, you know, this is the one where you can see that, that your comprehensive plan was over forty thousand, forty-six thousand five. And then if you add to that from the zoning code revisions, it's sixty thousand, six seventy. That's why we were trying to get a, that's why we were trying to get the grant for that. So...
So we already have budget and how much money for a...
Hundred thousand.
We've already had...
Hundred thousand.
Okay.
I thought we had, I said, sorry. I was thinking we had a hundred thousand there.
I could check.
So, if I remember correctly, when I read the first part, the second part is optional. I know we do need to update that, but we can get the ball rolling with the first part. Correct me if I'm wrong, with the forty thousand, part one? Or do we have to do both at the same time, Carmen?
I don't think you have to do both at the same time. I think the burn will work with you to do, you'll do, we'll start with part one, and then I think the things I mentioned that weren't built into the original cost are updating applications and forms and comparing to other communities, updating fee schedules, and then training for all the local officials. So I think you can get the ball rolling, but that might be a question.
What, council, what do you guys think?
I feel like we need to get started. I think one of the questions I had, Rick, was that, for some reason, and I know I'm a little slow on the uptake these days, but I thought there was a housing study incorporated into this, or, you know, as part of this, of what we wanted to do to the grand scheme of things. Is that, does anyone else remember that?
There is a housing study.
There is.
Is built into this?
Yes.
Okay, I guess.
It's a review and study.
So that's, that's the part that is an actual housing study.
Yes.
Oh, I'm glad it's built in, and I'm glad that I'm not losing my mind.
And I think that's in the first part.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe so.
It's not in the optional part. And this is the reason I would like to, personally, for me, I just want to, just to get the first part started.
And this is, trying to find the project schedule. These are, you know, six to eight months windows that we're working on. So certainly think that, obviously, we're just in February now, but we can, you know, the zoning ordinance comes into play after that window closes, then there's going to be some more money set aside, which might work out nicely. The only comment I would make, and I think I mentioned this to you, Carmen, is I've been lucky enough to sit on three of these committees that Taylor, Steve Williams has done in the past. Basically, they're collaborative committees, if you will, that bring engineers, builders, developers, city officials, all together. One of the things that I think are present in a lot of these zoning ordinances and comprehensive plans, they look really good on paper, and they look like good policies in black and white, but then when you get in the real world, they have a little bit more impact than when everybody's sitting around a table. So I think having their input in this, our engineers, our builders, developers, to kind of educate us on what that looks like, how that's actually applicable, I can't speak, in the real world, would be critical. So I would certainly make the motion to approve this. I think this is much, much needed. You know, I would just, you know, kind of throw in there, I would let kind of see the committee form to work on this as we move forward, so.
It says on the plan they'll form different committees, so they'll do that, and they can meet over Zoom, or they can do it in person, whatever kind of works best for the committee. Also, the advisory plan commission's attorney, Mr. Viper, highly recommends favors for Williams as well, so he wanted me to pass that along, and he's been...
I would much second that. That's right from the beginning.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
It sounds like they have a motion from Christian Evans to go forward the approval of the proposal to update the comprehensive plan. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Chris Albertson's second. Any other questions or comments, concerns?
Now, is it for the first step, or are you saying, I guess that's my, what's your motion?
So, I believe, Jan, not the John Swatik, I thought that we've had this kind of in the budget for the last couple of years.
I think so.
We didn't use the money last year. So there's, I think there's plenty of, like, a lot of money that's set aside for this that we cut and hold, correct?
When I saw it, I think twenty, about those forty thousand, I maybe had another few this year this past year, but I didn't see that.
I'm pretty sure.
So even in that case, let's say professional services on the council side, I would feel comfortable, as necessary as it is, to make that work, or track this.
I just wanted to know what the motion is.
I would, I would make the motion to approve the entire comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance altogether, as written in the proposal.
That's the hundred...
Yeah.
Hundred and seven thousand.
Does that include the additionals or...
It's the hundred and seven thousand of, Kurt Mitchell calling.
Comprehensive plan, you need, you need, oh, wait, some money.
So that doesn't include, include the additional services such as...
Training.
Yeah, I...
Map updates.
Yes, I would.
The fee schedule, the form was something that, Carmen and I discussed, that that would be, that is a cheap price to get some of that information. And I'll let her talk more about that, but, I mean, the fee schedule, Christian, for sure, we know that that's very valuable.
It's on page...
I don't know.
It's on page nineteen.
Nineteen.
It's on page nineteen.
Right.
So, they have page one, page two, and page three, and so the page threes were optional. It has hourly rates for training, any additional public meetings are in that, and then also all of the updates are under that.
Carmen, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of this stuff, this is something that as we get into this, we add-ons, we can go back and prove, correct? Is that...
That's a question for Josh.
I would shoot, I mean, it's not my call, but I would shoot, so.
I'll tell you that completely later.
I'll say.
You can go back and ask him.
So if we get down to, you know, page two, and we feel that it's necessary to, you know, add-on those additional public meetings?
Yes.
Zoning...
You can assert that if you go.
Exactly. But many ways. We can add a fee schedule at that point, twelve hundred dollars, you know?
Yeah. So I guess that total, kind of going back to your question there, councilman, I think the one oh seven, one seventy, that's comprehensive plan and the U D O combined. That's the motion that I would make.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, I'll second that for sure. So we had the motion go forward with the one oh seven, one, one oh seven, one seventy, with add-on to follow. Been seconded by Chris Albertson. Any other questions, comments? Bring none? Would you say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Next thing is the approval of the, of the loan rewrite. And Josh, you want to...
Yeah, this, this is a serendipity loan, a serendipity gift, and received a loan from the city, I believe, first in twenty seventeen. It actually dates back to twenty seventeen. It was modified at one point to allow for payments to be made monthly instead of quarterly, and then extended the pollute payment date to March first of twenty twenty-two. The borrowers have requested another five-year extension, so they continue making, and they are current with payments, they will continue making their five hundred dollar a month payment, and then have a pollute payment in March of twenty twenty-seven. I'll make that motion, you know, just, just company staying in business through COVID and everything. Anything we can do to help a lot, I'll make that motion that we approve the payment of loan rewrite.
I'll second. The man makes the motion. Bill Holblin seconds that motion. Any other questions or comments?
Interesting, Rick stays in?
Three and a quarter.
Yeah.
There's a schedule in your packet there.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Eric, anything else? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign? Unanimous? Thank you so very much. Next thing is ratification of the mayor's appointments. Can you see that? In your packet as well, so.
Mr. Mayor, there was a change on this, on the A and C board that I've made aware of, that you've changed. On what? That Mr. Schultz and Mr. Blanton, that you originally...
Mr. Blanton.
Well, you have Mr. Schultz listed.
Yeah. No, Mr. Blanton has been ill, and because they tried to reach him and was not able to reach him, I think there was an exception, so I called him today. He said, no, I still want to serve, so.
So, and I'm fine with that? I just want to make sure that...
Yes, yes.
We'll have to make this...
To clear that up, absolutely, yes. So Mr. Blanton will continue to serve, Mr. Schultz will continue to serve on advisory plan, I mean, not advisory plan, but, but the Board of Zoning Appeals, that's where he's at now, he's the sheriff there. But, but Mr., yeah, I wanted to stay on there, Steve Mathieu is on this. He's going to probably miss the February meeting, and, you know, so, but he'll be ready to go in March, he said.
So Eric Lowery, Jim Land, Mark Nicholson, that's the second. Josh is on the thing. Jim's on.
Josh is on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I can email it correct and talk to the council.
I think as long as we just make it known that we're making that change, Josh, can we do that? Can we say, on the resolution to approve it, we can just say we're, with the exception of Mr. Blanton?
As amended.
As amended, yes. Okay, that's what I thought.
Josh is going to be on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
What about Sammy on that Board of Zoning?
She's still there.
She's still there.
So Josh is someone else's. Josh is somebody else's.
I would say hundred...
So, if he's already on it, then...
It's a good order.
Yeah, to the B Z A.
Okay.
So Josh is, who's appointed? Our appointed?
I think it's mine.
Does it not say decided in your packet?
Mayor, it's, it's mayor's appointment.
So Josh and Sandy are both?
Sandy, right.
So we need Josh to go down there as well.
So you need to make a motion for the both of those to be appointed.
Yeah. So what's, I mean, I think the only change was basically where Josh was, was up here, that, yeah, it will remain with.
Yeah. Sandy was the only one on our packet for B Z A.
Yeah, okay. It's all in there?
Yeah.
So we need to...
Add the Josh.
Right. All right. Just want to make sure we do it legal.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion then to approve, ratify the mayor's appointments?
I'll make the motion to approve with the discussed amendments. Another, is it?
Absolutely. Jane, take it.
I'll second that. Okay, Chris Albertson's second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Mr. President, do you want us to discuss anything? Where, Miss, Miss Skinner's here on A R P line while we have zero, or is that point two?
I think as far as discussing, absolutely, you do it. Proving? No, not yet. I think there was some questions as far as timing, before I...
I guess, you know, there's been some emails coming back from, so that's why Miss Skinner's here this evening, in case you should answer any of your questions.
Well, I guess to start off, what it looks like, it's basically, first of all, thank you for being here, thank you for putting this list together. I know you and I have talked about the necessity to reimburse the electric company for some of these expenditures that have already taken place, and if I look on your list, the top three items are things that need to be paid back to the electric company.
Those are, the first is reimbursement back to the date of time that is available to be reimbursed. So we have all the claims for that. You can't reimburse from the beginning of time for this money. It's March of twenty twenty-one. The, the next one is purchasing new equipment that had already been purchased at electric and purchasing that as, and then transferring that as a fixed asset if approved, so that broadband and the fiber would own the assets for that, and we would be transferring that at that time as well.
So those assets were purchased with the electric funds?
Yes, and we would be paying that back and then transferring the assets, because those are tagged as assets to electric. Right now, they would be tagged to broadband.
Right, so our citizens will know that the electric company is going to be repaid.
Yes.
Those assets are going to go to broadband.
Yes.
And the people that, the rate payers of the broadband will have that investment and won't be on the electric company anymore.
Correct, you're correct.
I just want them to, out there...
And in future purchases, we would be handling...
Through broadband.
Yeah, through broadband, which we have also purchased, which was the third item, was the reimbursable amount to put back into the funds for broadband, which are our actual customer drops that we've already spent from that March twenty-one period until now. So that's what those top three are, and that's, they're kind of lump sums. The rest of the items on there are crucial to expansion of the fiber, OTDR, which is a, it's a measuring unit for the, the life of the fiber, the ribbon slicer, kudos to the guys, a ribbon slicer can do twelve slices at once, and they were able to get a cabinet done and saved remarkable time getting that completed. I was ecstatic with that, so that's just a little extra for the guys. Other things, when there was a trailer, the, we did have a special on there about the vehicles. Very happy that we've been able to kind of get a vehicle here and there, but they're kind of getting to the point of repairs, and to have a lot of vehicles, that's where that was coming into play. And if we did get a cable plow and a for machine, we needed the size of a truck to be able to haul it. We were able to get a cable plow, but we do not have the cable plow and a for machine, which is going to be your underground, that's where we're going to be utilizing that in subdivisions and neighborhoods that have underground utilities, to be able to run under the driveway or sidewalks or anything like that. But that's kind of encompassing everything. I did use kind of a total sum that you saw on there. I didn't want to ask for everything, or not ask for enough, but I felt that that number had been thrown around, so if it meets that, great. If it doesn't, I wanted to kind of outline everything in there.
What I want you to know as well, we did receive this A R P funding. We had, it was one point four million, we did seven hundred thousand one year and seven hundred thousand the next year, thinking we use on, on water sewage or broadband. And we also then had a swiftly, and there were, I think there were five hundred some odd municipal, you know, applications from, there were twenty-two awards. Scottsburg was one of those twenty-two awards, and we received four million. One lane was for water, and three lanes for sewage. So basically, that would actually kind of lead out, the rest is to be able to try to go ahead and fill all of Scottsburg out and regions beyond with, with that money, if council chooses.
I think, go ahead, Chuck.
No, I was just, to me, I think initially we need to, we need to find out how we, we pay that money back to the electric facility, because it comes to just over three hundred and ten thousand, and if my numbers are correct.
No, it's about two hundred and forty-three, because the other amount is reimbursement back to broadband itself of stuff we've already purchased.
Okay, all right, but, but there, okay, so those whole reimbursements...
And we have discussed that. I've talked to Jan in regards, I have everything broke out for the actual claims themselves with copies to be able to do that. Talked to Josh. I think we're, we're good as far as the process. It's, it's really what council wants to do. I've got all the, I mean, all the claims and everything are correct for it.
Well, I'm a little unclear on how we proceed, because you normally purchase equipment, those kinds of things, those do work, so can't, can't help it, Josh, with the, you know, will that, will these, these purchases come to the council? Will we give money for board works? The board works will oversee the purchase, or how does that, does that work?
So there's a few different steps here. One, we have the A R P line. So if we're going to allocate a portion of that, we'll have to do the plan, do the resolution. I think Jane will still need to do the additional appropriation for current guidance, because it makes it to the grandstand.
Additional for...
To move it out of that fund and wipe off processes. If we're at that point where you do that, the next meeting, we include broadband, and then the fire department, which we discussed.
You know, but...
Yeah, we can do that all in one resolution, one additional appropriation, make that a little bit more convenient. And then that, it would then be appropriated, and Jane can help me on this, but once it's then appropriated, we're basically, some of it's just moving it back, because we've already, so it would just be an intra-fund transfer.
Yeah.
So then any new purchases, you would already have the funds in your budget, and then, yes, she would come to board.
Board working, yeah, so the normal process.
Exactly. Okay, that's... And then Willie and Stacy and I have met on the intra-governmental agreement on the one we designate the asset, and then there's a debt that needs to be repaid. So setting forth, they've written a contract, if you will, in your, oh, for intra-governmental agreement, so everyone, in twenty years from now, will look at that and see where, you know, we've got the fiber build out, who owns what, and those state board accounts will appreciate that, Jan's office will appreciate that.
Yes.
Whoever's sitting in my seat ten years from now, Stacy's and Willie's will all appreciate that.
Everyone's very happy with all the conversations. I'm not going to speak for Willie, but I'm just speaking with us, everything is...
You see that?
Oh, yeah, like, everything is lined up pretty good if we can accomplish all of it.
So we've got a shell of that coming together, and a number came up on the terms of the A R P, so I'd say it makes sense that we kind of want those issues along together since they are somewhat tied together. How much, Jan, do we have enough to do everything out of A R P? That we need to do for broadband and all the others?
If you do that, and that's what's already been spent, and, yes.
Okay.
But we do have to do, we just did the additional for the first two hundred and five thousand. And I think, like you said, it would be a little delay in doing the additional because of hurricane now, so, you know.
So I, I'd say we go forward. I personally, yeah, I don't know, what do you guys think?
We said, I mean, we earmarked that money early on, or, you know, expressed our interest in trying to invest in the fiber build out, the end of money.
So, and is it, has money been made available? Anybody know about the infrastructure bill that was coming? Is that, is that out there? Maybe we can apply for more things, because I, I know this is a tiny bit of what we need. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It means a lot, though. It's going to help us.
I know that. I'm not saying there's more need.
But there's going to be more needed, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And we, we need to apply for whatever we can, uh, we have already applied for another community crossing grant with lay of elements.
Okay.
And with road and sidewalk, again, we need as much money for broadband as we can get.
Well, I know the infrastructure bill has a lot of money taken just for broadband.
That was, that was gonna be, I guess, my question, and, um, I, I don't want to slow the process up, but I think that there's money every year from the state and obviously the Fed, and I don't know, obviously, kind of where that settles to Stacy necessarily. Um, as far as the list is concerned, I know, um, I could kind of read through these, the emails that you were, um, kind of sent, Stacy broke it down really well. I think kind of where I'm looking at too is, um, what do we, I, I guess the, um, trying to think of the best way to say, manpower versus material on hand, right? So I think if we can get to a point that where we have manpower and labor and that has enabled them to get that filled out, where do those numbers meet? Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't want to move forward maybe with the whole pie if, you know, seventy-five percent of it, I don't want to say it's been set to the side until we get, you know, us, us the labor to meet that same demand.
Yeah.
I guess it's like, you know, going to, you know, sixth grade business class, right, supply and demand, right? So if our demand is dealt with new customer because of the fiber build out, and I think that's something I know you and I talked about is, uh, we would all anticipate with this new fiber optic, then there'd be a lot new, uh, there'd be a broad customer base. But with the way the world is right now, nobody knows the supplies and et cetera, et cetera, so, uh, it's not me saying I'm not a proponent of utilizing the money, I think that it's necessary and, um, more so than anything, I think broadband has, has shown in the last twenty-four to thirty-six, uh, months how important it is. Uh, but I guess I would just be curious, because I think you mentioned today in one of the emails, uh, maybe the cable plow, you were out till December, right? So is there funds that we can maybe look at, say, okay, this is gonna be in the short term, let's maybe set aside X because then we can, maybe when the road catches up with supply, et cetera, et cetera, to meet that later, I guess that's kind of, is it a space it out as opposed to kind of the whole enchilada, if you will?
And from my understanding, I don't know if the question of salaries or, uh, even if you did contract, no, like any type of pay could be utilized out of that appropriated money, if that, if that makes sense, so.
Yeah.
It would, I mean, if, if it was allocated, when I say December, that's if you put your order in.
Right, yeah.
Now, so.
Order now to get it. Yeah.
Now.
A lot to be asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a couple of these things, whether the council says, we're gonna use that money for that, I'm gonna get it anyway.
Yeah.
Um, it's just gonna be able to allow for money to be there to hire at that point, so I would.
I guess that the question, and I, I didn't really ask it very well, because I'm trying to figure out exactly the best way to frame it. Like I said, there's no way of knowing what the fiber build out's gonna be as far as what it's gonna do to our customer base, right? So.
Well, it's, I mean, it increases, we're, we're installing it, but we have two install people.
Correct, so that, and that's kind of what I was saying, so we're splicing, you know, twelve fibers at a time.
Which is great.
Correct, would that have enough people to then install the twelve fibers, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand, on that, um, I think we have to get to a point, because there's so many different roles right now.
Yeah.
That people are filling.
Correct.
Um, we're building out the north subsection, um, to the point that we splice the cabinet, but what are called MST's aren't all in the air and the customer drops. So.
Correct.
Broadband, as far as the two installers are also doing some of the build work too.
Yeah.
On that side, which is extra work.
For sure.
Uh, and at this point, if some money can go back in, so you're not seeing that salary, you know, if we could get the point to hire and more to help on that build-out stage, but I think we're at least a couple of months from that, so we can get a handle on the building out with the way things are structured right now.
For sure, and I think that's, to kind of further that discussion, broadband's a little bit different than all our early utilities, right? Because while there is competition out there, you know, if you're in the city limits, you're on city sewer, you're on city water, you know, with broadband, you know, we don't want people to go to Verizon, Frontier, Spectrum, et cetera, et cetera, but there's a reality that some people will. So I guess that, that's where I'm coming at, is I want to give broadband the, the money that they need in order to build that out. But is there a way, from my standpoint, that I would caution is, okay, let's go through phase one, let's get to see that north subsection that you're talking about, let's see how much this expands our customer base, does people from Spectrum, do they switch over to our broadband, do, you know, we have new customers here? And see how that rolls out, and then maybe that second allotment, you see what I'm saying? Is there, is a way to, because I don't want to undercut what you guys are doing, but I want to obviously help in that sense, but I don't want to, you know, God forbid, we unroll this whole thing and we put as much money as we're talking about, that there isn't that much customer shift, you know?
Yeah.
Um, I guess that's just the only caution I would throw on that, if that makes sense.
It does, but I think also it's that question, which comes first, the ability?
Correct.
I mean, you know, and I think since this is, we can't use this funds for anything other than what was it, broadband, water or sewer.
Yeah.
And we worry about the Swift grant, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, you said Swift grant was earmarked for water and sewer.
Yeah.
So my position would be, let's give them what they need and see what happens. And if we have to come budget time, we need the budget for two more employees or whatever we need.
Yeah.
If the customer base is there is supported.
Yeah, so when you're saying, and I, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, we're not, are you talking about the entire five hundred that we're discussing at this level?
I'm talking about the, the assets they need.
The top three, is that top three just, just reimburses, I mean, that.
That just reimburses.
I'm talking, I'm talking about.
I'm just talking about the five hundred.
But that, that.
You're talking about the entire.
Three hundred and ten thousand of that five hundred is already spent.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that's what I'm saying, it's just, it, we're not, we're not purchasing any new assets.
Of, of new money to, to outfit the, the fiber splicer and the truck.
Correct, that's not being added, that's reimbursement of material either.
And think of it this way, Councilman Evans, that money is reimbursing our rate payers.
Correct, I guess.
Three hundred and ten thousand.
I should say four through six, I'm talking ribbon splicer, OTDR, and the trucking van, because that, that's where I thought we were kind of talking about what we need now versus.
Yes.
Kind of in the email thread we were talking about.
Right.
And kind of Rose had pointed out, you know, one of the first three items that need immediate attention, um, the splicer, the OT, OTDR, and the trucking van. Um, I think obviously the reimbursement, that's a different scenario altogether, I think that's obviously a bringer in this situation. Uh, I guess I'm talking about the ribbon splicer, the, the trucking van, does that meet where our employee base is, is?
Yes.
That's kind of.
Right now we have a single splicer, um, we were able to have a vendor that brought us a ribbon splicer, that's.
Yeah.
So I misconception that they were able to use that because we had a demo.
Yeah.
We don't own one, um, another vendor was nice enough even today to bring out the, the light meter, uh, OTDR.
Yeah.
And were able to test some fibers with it, it's great.
Yeah.
Um, so those two items, I'm gonna find a way to get them either way.
For sure.
Whether it's through this money so, or, or not, those are two critical items that help the crew do their job well.
Awesome.
And make sure that the fiber splicer is good and make sure that we can do maybe even more efficiently.
Gotcha, gotcha.
The new splicer cut the time almost in half.
It went from fifteen minutes, I guess, from, for one splice to it took about fifteen to twenty minutes for twelve.
Gotcha.
That's.
So, so for, let's talk, I guess, then material wise, right? I'm not even in the ballpark, you know, intelligent enough to explain fiber optic anybody, but with the, with the world is right now, I mean, are, would we be in a situation where we would be producing this and come to a standstill because we don't have the fiber? Or we're waiting on the fiber, or?
Um, we could wait to order, but we do have the fiber, the pre-drops, I've already ordered that, that was part of the reimbursement.
Gotcha.
Um, we're in the meetings, actually, Thursday with the, um, vendor that we get our customer premise equipment from.
Yeah.
They have new equipment, so we're scoping that out to see which product we're going to purchase here on out.
Okay.
Um, so those are the things that sometimes could be eighteen weeks.
Yeah.
Thirty weeks.
Yeah.
Uh.
And that's, and that's, there's a lot of excitement out here, right, from constituents that are excited about this, I'm excited about this.
Um, the biggest.
I just don't want to get to the point where, you know, we purchase a truck and a van, a ribbon splicer, and then we're setting away on materials because the world's crazy.
We have plenty of material and that is a good thing, that it was ordered kind of all at once.
Yeah.
Um, once we saw that, you know, thirty-eight weeks out.
Yeah.
You're like, what, just get them here, so that reimbursement money will take care of that.
Okay.
A lot of these items are still new, they're just waiting to get deployed, it has to be mapped out, it has to be, um, planned.
Yeah.
But we have a lot of the supplies to continue to build, it's just an issue of making sure that everything's where it needs to be and can't build a little portion of it and hook it up, you kind of have to build it out and make sure everything's connected for the section and then start hooking up, which is what, on a customer side, and people are like, well, I just saw them outside my house.
Yeah.
Yep, they were, they're probably out there again, and do, working on something, but they can't hook up until we're, we're completely done.
Not preaching that, Stacy, because that's what I said, I saw the emails, I didn't have time to respond, I mean, I saw you tonight, so I'm gonna ask them those questions, but. I think, a- as we're talking about this, I would, I, I would like to continue the conversation on the whole chunk, if we can, as a council. Um, you know, the five hundred thousand that we're discussing, if we can maybe have a little bit more dialogue about that, um, just for the short term. Uh, I have no problem getting that money, you know, it's a problem, and I think, you know, when we originally started this, I think I was the one that, that had kind of spoke up about how essential broadband was, so. Uh, I just want to make sure, you know, that we're obviously following along with where we are, and I know there's been some other things that have been brought to attention about AARP, um, you know, not to take away from what is being done here, so, um, just to kind of get a good inventory and head count on where we're at with the money and what we can do for it.
So can we, are you saying that you don't want to have a resolution, we, we, how many times, resolution is, is one reading, right, Josh?
Correct.
So you're saying you don't want resolution for next?
That, and we can have the rest of the next council, I'm saying, I think, which, like, you made a motion to move forward on this.
Yes.
Let's, let's talk until the next council meeting, and then we have the resolution, if that's what we all deem necessary.
Right.
I just don't want to make a motion to deny.
I don't think there's a motion, there's not a motion, we can't, there's not a motion at all, I think it, we were just asking, are we ready to get a resolution going?
Okay.
Does it, does that make?
Yeah, I welcome that conversation.
Yeah, okay, because there's nothing to move on, I don't think, there's.
No.
Okay.
And let me say this, this, you know, Stacy is here as the director, uh, we have an IT guy here as well, but her crew, uh, Jensen and Zach and Matt, they're kind of phased out of the electric, now, if you go out to the electric, you'll see that whole place is all basically, but you can actually drive through there now. And, and, and the broadband is a separate area in there, it's all fenced off and all of their stuff is put in very explicit areas, so it's all tagged with partner numbers, quantities that they need, incoming, coming in, so I mean, it's, it's extremely water. So, I just get rid of my hands, so I mean, it's going along very nicely, very much on schedule, we're very, we're being very proud. Anything else on that? Thank you so very much for being here.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thanks, Stacy.
Do we have anything else, Mr. President?
I don't, I think I. We got a report on the, the pay app, I did report to board of works that, uh, we received our eighth pay app on the wastewater treatment plant, which was the total of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. And today we have spent ten million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. So we still have about two point two million, and they are moving along nicely. This was the lowest pay app that we've had, so, uh, we would like to see that, but for, just wanted to report, and I think when we went with this process, the gray marks reuse this, then it goes to Mark Solomon, the engineer, and I'm the last one that gets it to sign off, to authorize the spending. So that's reported from now.
I meet with these guys weekly and it looks like we're gonna start putting the fluid cell reactors in there.
Is what, Mayor?
Start putting, uh, the fluid in the reactors in there, so we're getting that close. We have a transition period, so, you know, you're, you're trying to get off the old and get on the new, and so there's been a few, you know, bugs there, we're working on all of that. And it's gonna be amazing, I mean, once we get ready, we're gonna have a huge open house with all the council, and I hope the whole city come out and you what, what they're paying, so. So, what else do we have? Anything else? Well, we want to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day and, uh, thank you for a good meeting, and I would love to see you in a wish in a journal. Check basic books, we're a journal, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so very much.